She said, "Well, I didn't think there was anything wrong with more information." I said, "I was gonna do a committee hall, but Jackie can never wait, 'cause it's not Jackie's way. It's no way." And, um, so... So she said, "Oh, well, I don't care. I'm a no." So everyone's a no but him. But I don't know who's staying. I'm gonna take all my stuff out. Maybe I'll have a coughing fit and not be able to return. They've changed all of the names.
No, by definition. By definition, 2.0 megawatts by the state and less is a community sold. The state.
I think they changed it.
I just talked to somebody in the state and they said, "No, we didn't change it. 2.0 and less is a community." The community doesn't have to go in front of the county. It has to go, you know, the county still has jurisdiction over it. That minimizes how many you're gonna have in your area. Now, you picture commercial as anything above 2.0.
Right. I will definitely get that very far.
I understand. Oh, no, no, don't worry about it. I just something to the future. That's why they were very specific when they said 1.95 megawatts. Yeah, well, that's why they were specific when they said 1.95 megawatts. They didn't say 2.0. Well, unfortunately, the green energy people warned us, "Well, okay."
But I think you can do.
You wanna shut down.
Should make your point.
You wanna shut down. You wanna eliminate coal plants. You wanna eliminate the new plants. And they wanna go with this order. That's fine. But you're tying everybody's standard. You have 30-something meetings here. And then still deny. So then the state gets involved, saying, "We wanna make compliance by 75% of green energy by originally 25,500 to 30,350." Or 20, 350. Yeah. So the states are over saying, "Okay, guys, we're not gonna do this anymore." That's right. Right. They caused a problem. Thank you.
This is, this is, oh, it's a bearing.
Hey, if your guys are doing it, we're gonna support ya and hold ya up a little bit. If I wouldn't have been out of line, I'd have brought you a couple cupcakes. Hold you over. Cause you, you look like you're starting to, you know, you're, you're. Well, that's right, I mean, you're gonna, you know, wearing me down.
You enjoying yourself?
Oh, yeah. Oh, this is beautiful. Thank you for doing it. No, 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 no. Time-wise. I'm referring to time-wise. No. No, it's, it's, the camaraderie and the discussions and, no problem. Ain't enough. But I agree with what you have said and something else. It, it work. There's some news to do that in. If your lazy ass can't get there, get out.
One minute, one minute.
County was in violation of the minimum wage. Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. That's right. They're gonna have another cash town. I call it the cash town, you know. They're gonna bring it to you. You're gonna get paid next $100,000. It's a given. Where else are you gonna go? I'm with the operator. It's my boss. So I'm with the operator. I travel. So I come, I travel. Then one time I was covering everything from here to north of these towns. So, yeah, so I felt blessed.
I was gonna tell you, take your flowers off. And the ones off the table.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
We're ready. I think our 10 minutes is up.
Hey, good morning, every, oh, what am I saying? Good afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna call this August 17th, 2023 special meeting to order. Well, members here, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Belitch. Trainier. Dean Schlotman. Van Dyne. Pretzel. Butler. Newquist. Richmond. Parker. Williams. Diaz. Winfrey. Coleman. Logan. Freeman. Revis. Mitchell. Ortiz. Berkowitz. Mueller. Costa. O'Gala. 18 members present, we have a quorum. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments? I have a couple people signed in here. Do we have any public comments for the agenda item? Just a reminder, when you come up, if you'll please state your name for us. And you have three minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks. Good afternoon, I'm Hudson Hollister. I'm the co-chair of the Courthouse Preservation Partnership. Most of y'all have met us before. We're excited to have the chance to discuss the redevelopment of the 1969 Will County Courthouse building. You'll hear from leaders in the community over the next few minutes about how redeveloping rather than demolishing the courthouse building is cheaper, better for the local economy, and better for the environment. One of the first speakers you'll hear from is Bonnie McDonald, who is the CEO of Landmarks Illinois. I know there have been a lot of comment, there's been a lot of commentary on the motivations of our group. I can tell you that my day job is I run a tech company. The only real estate investment I have is my house. I'm hoping that we have a great discussion this afternoon on the costs, the economic pros and cons, and the environmental repercussions of demolition versus redevelopment. I'm excited for all of y'all's attention. I think we'll be out of here fast. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Madam Executive and Members. My name is Bonnie McDonald. As Hudson just introduced me, I'm the President and CEO of Landmarks Illinois, which is a statewide nonprofit organization that provides free supportive services, financial resources, and technical expertise to local nonprofits, governments, and private citizens that want to reuse significant places in their communities. Now, I'm speaking today in support of Resolution 23269 that allows for further exploration of reusing the historic Will County Courthouse. Now, we at Landmarks Illinois want to thank the board for considering this important step to gather and consider all of the information before making a final decision on what to do with this publicly owned asset. Now, the resolution calls out the reasons why it's important to explore reuse. Just a few of those. That there would be no need to spend the $2 to $3 to $5 million of public funds to demolish the courthouse. That new construction is more time-consuming. And in fact, reusing this courthouse can get a product to market, can get your offices to market much more faster and less expensively. The county is currently renting space for office functions, and it is our understanding that you have identified that you need more space. A reused county courthouse comes online faster than new construction, and as I said, it's less costly. So county services can also be consolidated to create greater government efficiency in the process. Now, you create more construction jobs per dollar spent through adaptive reuse. And, and that may seem counterintuitive, but it's because adaptive reuse is more labor-intensive than material-intensive. So you actually create more jobs for people when you reuse an existing building. And from an environmental standpoint, as Hudson said, reusing this building is the most environmentally responsible thing to do. Concrete is what's called a carbon sink. It actually keeps all the carbon that was created when, when it was put into service, and it locks that carbon away. So actually, when you demolish the building, it releases that carbon back into the atmosphere. So if you care about the environment, reusing places is the best way to, to ensure that we do not contribute to climate change. Now additionally, the process of reuse, the courthouse can be made more energy-efficient, and it can reduce operational costs in the process. So all I had to say, over my 25 years as a preservation professional, I've seen many public benefits of reinvesting in historic places that were once seen as disposable. A reuse transforms vacant spaces into useful and interesting places to work and to live and to visit. It increases foot traffic for those local businesses that need to see people coming in, and, and reuse inspires other people to invest in their own properties as well, which benefits our taxpayers. Now, we're seeing this from large communities to small. You might have heard of the old Cook County courthouse, or, excuse me, the old Cook County Hospital in Chicago, the McCoupin County Courthouse in Carlinville, from the Shelbyville Chautauqua to the West Chicago McCauley Schoolhouse. These are all public assets that were reused.
I'm gonna need you to wrap up, please.
Thank you, ma'am. So just to say, I once worked for city and county government, city and state government, and to say that having the most information possible is what is gonna benefit taxpayers. So this resolution just allows you to pause and to gather as much information as possible to ensure that you're making the most responsible decision for the taxpayers. That is all that it does. It doesn't guarantee that you're going to do anything. So we ask you to pass this resolution, and I stand by as a resource for you to assist as you move forward. Thank you so much for this time.
Do we have a... We're gonna keep this orderly, Dan. Does David Beanstra? I'm just gonna call since no one's coming up here. Yep.
Thank you. My name is David Beanstra. I'm speaking as a Joliet historian who also teaches at the University of St. Francis, and previously I was the assistant university historian at the University of Illinois at Chicago. The architecture of this is brutalism. We all know what it looks like. It is controversial from the start. Exposed concrete, harsh edges, utilitarian look. Detractors called this Soviet-style architecture. And it had a moment in time from the late 1950s into the early 1980s. The last structure I could find that looked like this was built in 19, it was completed in 1981 at church in Iowa. During the 1980s, brutalism fell out of, fell out of favor. People were looking for something different. Incidentally, at the same time, communism was falling out of favor. Many of these buildings have since been raised. But like everything historical, what was old is suddenly becoming intriguing and new again. A perfect example, example many of you have seen was UIC's what they once called Circle Campus Downtown. Circle Campus Brutalist Architecture. And for years, it was seen and decried as naysore. But beginning in the 2000s, it became the heart of what is now University Village and one of the most coveted spots in Chicago. Will County Courthouse has the same possibilities. Something that is old, new again, can become a centerpiece of a redeeveloped Joliet. It also has features that increasingly, once again, come into vogue. The large, the large floor plan with the possibility for communal spaces in the center are something that builders are increasingly looking for. We already have that structure. My hope is, is that we have actually residents of Joliet gone through a, losing a courthouse in the past. My idea is that maybe we hang on to this and revitalize this as a new community center downtown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Good afternoon. I'm Richard Friedman, an attorney with offices at 20 South Clark Street in Chicago. First, I'd like to add my thanks for your patience after this long day and your attention today. By way of background, I and my law firm specialize in land use and municipal law. We represent owners of historic structures, both public and private, and we represent landmark preservation organizations. I'm appearing here to suggest to the board that there's precedent in Illinois for publicly owned landmarks to be rehabilitated and retained for public use using the federal and state historic tax credits. This is both legally and financially feasible. Historic tax credit programs are not just theoretical. Other governments have successfully used the incentives to redevelop historic public buildings. Perhaps the best example is the adaptive reuse of the old Cook County Hospital. As one of the attorneys who represented the county in that transaction, I'm familiar with the legal and financial terms that made the project successful. Cook County leased the historic, but the very deteriorated building to the Walsh Construction Team, who rehabilitated the building inside and out. Today, and if you've seen it, it's magnificent. The county legally retains ownership of the building and leases a portion of the interior itself for its own use as county offices. The remainder of Cook County Hospital serves the public with a hotel, food services, and other private uses. The Cook County Board's vision demonstrates that privately funded redevelopment for public use can occur using federal historic tax credits. Cook County did not lose ownership or control of the building, and it continues today to serve the public. In Rockford, the Turner School is an example of publicly funded redevelopment. The city of Rockford took advantage of the federal tax credits as well as the Illinois River Edge Tax Credits and investor funds to rehabilitate the historic school into a facility that's now being used by the Rockford Police Department. The rehabilitation and reuse of the 1969 Will County Courthouse is an even better candidate than the Cook County Hospital was. Unlike Cook County, the 1969 courthouse can take advantage of both the federal historic tax credits as well as the newly extended Illinois River Edge Tax Credits, which offers a 25% historic tax credit and other tax incentives. So I urge that the Will County Board to consider these examples and take the opportunity of investigating the rehabbing and retention of the 1969 Will County Courthouse.
Thank you. Barb Newberg.
Hi, I'm Barb Newberg. I served as a planner in Joliet for 32 years, from 1985 to 2016. And so I saw a lot of transition downtown. The courthouse is an anchor. Not everyone likes it. So since I retired, I've traveled a lot around the world. And there's an example in South America, in Brazil. It's Museum of Modern Art. It's brutalist. It was converted. It was an adaptive reuse. They hank Picassos, Matisse, Renoirs, freestanding in the open space. So what I'm asking is you would try thinking outside of the box to reuse this amazing building done by a well-known architect. I would really appreciate it. There's also a building in Medellin, Colombia. Same deal. It looks like it's upside down. It was turned into a community center. And what happened there is that an oil company relocated a whole village and didn't compensate them enough. And so what their compensation was, is to create a community center in this brutalist building with all the money they were due. So that's just a couple examples, but I would favor a public use of the building. But think outside of the box, please.
Thank you. Nick, are you, are you speaking today, Nick, or you wanna go last? Yeah, absolutely. Are we saving you for, are we saving you for last?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Madam Executive and council members, and thank you for your patience and your attention today. I'm Jonathan Solomon. I'm a registered architect in the state of Illinois and a member of the American Institute of Architects. I teach architecture and preservation at the Art Institute of Chicago. And in my work as a partner at the firm Preservation Futures, I have supported the effort to adaptively reuse numerous public buildings in the state. Today, you've heard comments on the economic cost and the social and cultural cost of demolishing the Will County Courthouse. These are each, on their own, extremely compelling arguments to preserve the building, but I want to add to them by speaking briefly about the environmental costs of demolition, and specifically about embodied energy and embodied carbon. Embodiment is a concept used in the building industry to quantify the values of existing buildings in terms of the energy used to produce them. In the case of the courthouse, this includes the energy needed to produce and assemble steel reinforcement and pour concrete. All the work needed to enable this construction required energy, acquired largely by burning carbon, which is considered to be embodied in the still perfectly solid and functional building. Concrete construction requires a large amount of energy, but lasts a very, very long time, or can, making it ultimately one of the more sustainable building methods if you don't tear it down at the mere beginning of its life. Demolition would therefore cost, in environmental terms, not only the energy needed to pulverize, cart away, and dispose of the building materials, not only the energy necessary to build an entirely new building, but the energy that is presently embodied in the existing concrete courthouse. Council members, the environmental waste, just like the fiscal waste or, or cultural waste involved in demolishing the courthouse, is as staggering as it is unnecessary. Adapting the building for ongoing contemporary uses would require a fraction of the energy and materials as demolishing and rebuilding it. With reasonable regular maintenance, the courthouse can continue to serve the city of Joliet another 100 years or more. This approach would have a significantly smaller environmental impact. It would be significantly more sustainable than demolition. Thank you.
Thank you. We're waiting, we're gonna add Natalie Coleman and Judy O'Gala to the rolls. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. No, to the roll call, cause. The roll, you were, you were here for the roll call. You can speak during discussion. We'll have, we'll vote, and you'll get your discussion time. Yep.
Madam Executive, county board members and staff, as you probably are aware, the Courthouse Preservation Partnership was started two years ago by Hudson Hollister. And the original purpose for that organization was to work cooperatively with the county board in coming up with appropriate and potential adaptive reuses of that building as opposed to demolition. So my mission today is simply to say, thank you, thank you very much for making this special meeting possible. We're very grateful.
Public who would like to speak on the matter. Okay, at this time, I need a motion. No, you will get, no, yeah, okay, I'm going to just tell you right now, it's going to be denied because you are, we go through this every time. You're a county board member. You're, we're going to, we're going to have a motion. We're going to have a second, and you're going to have a discussion, and you're going to be able to talk.
Point of order, because I need to be able to address the body. Will I be able to address the members as?
Well, they'll hear you, yes.
Or do I have to address the chair?
Well, yes, you'll have to address the chair, which the body will hear.
Is there a public comment, and is my wish to address the body?
You are a county board member. You're here in the county board capacity. You've gone through this. You will have, you will have time and discussion. This is how it's set up. You will, you are a county board member. You are a voting member, and you will be able to do this. Thank you. I'm not making it up. All right. All right. So at this time, I'm going to need a motion to, what?
I wasn't here for the roll.
Oh, you, I'm sorry. We'd like to add in that part of the roll. Okay, is someone here going to make the motion for this? Jackie?
I'll make the motion.
Hold on a second, Jackie. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I see. I'll make a motion that we entertain the non-binding resolution supporting the investigation of potential adaptive reuses for the old Will County Courthouse building.
I have a motion by Trineer, seconded by Butler. Discussion.
There you go.
There you go, Dan. You want to discuss or no? Now you're like, no, I don't want to know. You're on.
Thank you. I'm hoping to have a little bit of leeway in my speaking. As a taxpayer in Will County, I expect my officials, my representatives, to be responsible and attentive to my needs, both emotional, social, and fiscal. And I like to think that my leaders were going to be courageous, innovative, and not just going along to get along. I'm looking for leaders who are willing to make decisions that are maybe outside the box, maybe, you know, something that's not been done before, for the benefit of the people. I believe that a lot of people feel like this in our country. That's what they don't like about government. It's not to be simple and easy. It's about making good decisions at the right times for the people. This building does not belong to the board. It doesn't belong to the executive. It belongs to the people. And it's only reasonable that there be an ad hoc committee or something put out so that we can get enough information to find out if this is worth saving or not. There has not been one bit of evidence presented that has said that this thing is not worth saving. I know that the board had made a decision to tear this down four years ago. A lot has happened in four years. There certainly wasn't $35 million available for construction costs that the people do not have to pay for. So that's a big factor that wasn't here. So anyone who says, "We're doing it because the decision was made, and that's what we're going to do," that's not the kind of government that I want representing me. All right. Currently, we pay over $1 million in leased properties. And those leased properties add up to about 65,000 square feet. The old county courthouse is 140,000 square feet. So I don't see why we wouldn't consider such a viable option. I was told when I went, before I went in there on a tour, that that place was falling down, that I would have to wear a helmet, that it was like a dungeon, and it was none of that. I've been through that building. I've done construction my whole life, and the building is far from dilapidated. So I want an independent group to just go through and see if this building is worth saving. That's a responsible thing. I'm not asking to say, hey, let's rip this building down or let's not rip it down. I'm just saying, give this some time to make a responsible decision. Wait. Just taking a breather there. So, you know, environmentally speaking, concrete is one of the biggest emitters of CO2. And I got to be honest, I'm not into the whole CO2 thing, but I'm not going to take that away from people because, you know, I might be wrong. But if you are one that believes in that, the actual use of concrete is like number two or number three, right behind the United States, in CO2 production. So I mean, if they demolish this building, they're going to have to come up with new materials. So forget what they've taken apart. They have to come up with new materials. It's a fiscally sound idea of reusing a building like this. And there's need for it. Now I'm done.
We have a county board member, Mueller, and then Balaage. I will now. I do now.
Sure. I have read this over, and I have three issues that I want to address today. First of all, I want to understand what the significance of this being titled "non-binding" is. It does not read as if it is non-binding. It reads as if, given us voting for that, that the county executive cannot proceed with anything. So I really need some clarification on the "non-binding"ness. Also, if it's non-binding, doesn't, that doesn't, if it's non-binding, even if it passes through here, what does that mean for the county executive's office? Does it mean they can't move forward with talking to any of the companies? We've already gotten bids from them. What does it mean? And also, I vigorously oppose, there's a, one of the further, "be it further resolved," it's the second to the last, states that we take no further action towards demolition of the former Will County Courthouse until such time as the board so directs. Upon determining that adaptively reusing the former Will County Courthouse is not in the best interests of the citizens, that is completely subjective. A person could argue either side of that. You know, there is no definitive what's in the best interest that, like, that just isn't going to happen. So that's subjective. What's in the best interest of the residents in my district is not the same as what's in the best interest of residents in another district. So I think it's very subjective, and that, I vigorously oppose that part of this resolution. And that would be my three points. Thank you.
Thank you. County Board Member Balaage. No, no, you don't get to respond. County Board Member Balaage.
Oh, good. It works. I've said a lot of things for the last couple of months about this development. I won't call it stupid, even though that's what I think it is, but I don't want to offend people with my colorful language. But anyway, I don't hear any discussion about that property being a trust and breaking trust. And I guess everybody that's in favor is liking the idea of maybe going around somebody's wishes that died. You know, that's one thing. The next thing is that we're going to get 45 cents on a dollar. Well, who comes up with the other 55 cents? The county. Where are we going to get it from? We're going to have to do a bond or something. We're not going to have the 55 cents. So we got to pay. Where were all the developers and all these people that we're hearing about in 2018 and 19? Because we didn't just do this in one month. This thing went on and on and on. Whoever was on the board knows, our board was very diligent about saying, "Destroy the building." Very diligent. We just didn't say, "Go." So now, all of a sudden, a new board comes in with some people from outside of the board, making claims or whatever they want to make, and then certain people are agreeing with them or not agreeing with them. But the bottom line is, all this stuff was discussed in depth for a long time before we made that decision. Now, new people are saying the people that voted to destroy the building are idiots. Basically, that we didn't know what we were doing. Well, we sure did know what we're doing. And I missed, I just asked two things. I could go on and on about this courthouse, and nobody's going to be able to answer the questions. So, you know, in my opinion, if it was me, you're lucky I'm not the county executive, I would have just went and did it already. I would have just bulldozed the damn thing. But that's me. But anyway, that's, that's what I got to say. And we got to really realize that everybody that was on that prior board really looked at it. And that's Denise, and Meta, and Joe, and Micah, Jackie, I'm looking around, Frankie, Annette, Judy, me. So you're saying we're a bunch of goofballs? I'm using that word instead of swearing. But anyway, God bless you guys.
All right. We're going on to County Board Member Trineer.
Thank you, Madam Executive. I don't think anybody on this board is an idiot or a goofball. Just to be perfectly clear, I want to make sure that the Assistant State's Attorney understands that we are looking for an official opinion, or at least I am, from our ASA, onto whether or not the county could enter into an LLC that would allow us to be an applicant for these state and federal and historic tax credits. That was not a question that was asked four years ago, was never discussed. Everybody looked at that building and said, and I'll use a stronger word, "I hate it." That really wasn't, I mean, that, to be honest, I don't care whether you hate or you like or you love the building. Whether you dislike the design or you love the design, the building is there. It's a perfectly good building. In fact, I, somebody told me somewhere along the line that the concrete may not even be cured yet in some of those pillars. And this was put together in 1969. So it certainly hasn't outlived itself, if it's not even dried on the inside. I know in this community there's been a lot of regret in past years over the 19-whatever-year-it-was-built courthouse, the limestone one that used to sit in front of our current old courthouse. There's been regret that it was torn down, that it wasn't preserved. Some people don't like limestone buildings. Some people might not like, what is it, Joliet Township High School over here by the Slammers Field that's, you know, got the turrets and central? You know, I come from a community where there's nothing left of whatever was originally there, except for a couple of houses, one of which is located next to a cemetery. I don't want to see in five years that the next board, or six years or eight years, the next board that comes along, have them have regrets because we didn't do our due diligence. I'm not necessarily saying I'm 100% in support of demolition or not demolishing. I just know that I don't feel like we did our due diligence. We were told we couldn't do anything with that building except tear it down because it was going to cost $40 million. So all we could do was tear it down, and we had to use the land. There were no other options. There were no LLCs. I have since learned that, you know, whether or not we're home rule or not has absolutely no impact on this. This is a really good, solid building that we could insulate and make a whole lot more energy efficient, very, very easily, that would save us money in the long run on energy. We are going to be getting profits, and I'll call them profits, from the RNG plant at some point. I don't know exactly what the amortization schedule is for paying off the loans we took, and I think they were loans to ourselves. There was some bonding, but we put in some money, too. I do feel we should absolutely do a little better job on our due diligence for our taxpayers. I have no problem making an amendment to remove the non-binding part. If another board member wants to make a different suggestion on the language in the next to the last "be it further resolved," that's our job. If we don't like something, to say something and make an amendment. But I do think we have not done our due diligence on this project, despite how many times people have told me that we did. I don't believe it. And I'm the one that's representing the people in my community, and I have the right to vote the way I feel the residents in my community would support and appreciate. So thank you very much.
County Board Member Newquist.
So I've made no secret of the fact that I hate the building. I think it's ugly, and I would not be sorry if it was torn down. However, having said that, I do feel that if it were true that adaptively reusing would save taxpayers money, and I am not sure that that is the case, I would at least be obligated to consider the alternatives. But the thing that most concerns me is what, you know, Member Trineer brought up, that we've had a lot of lawyers tell us what's possible, but we can't go by what other lawyers say. They may be very knowledgeable, and I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to say that, that they don't know what they're talking about. I'm sure they do. We need a definitive legal opinion from our state's attorney's office as to what is possible for us. Once we get that opinion, then I think we go from there, and I think it is pointless for us to go on arguing adaptive reuse versus tearing down a building new, when we don't even know what parameters are available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. County Board Member Revis.
You're on?
You are on, sir.
So I signed Member Butler's document for this special meeting. And I did so because it's clearly an issue that members of both parties of this board want to talk about, and it deserved further discussion. And I understand that many residents feel strongly about this courthouse as well. However, I think that the courthouse is symbolic of the real concern from the community members and maybe some of the members on the board. You know, I don't think that they're worried about adaptively reusing the courthouse, but I think the real focus is making the city of Joliet and Will County as a whole a vibrant city that is filled with economic development, people, you know, all the things that we want to see from a strong and healthy community. So regardless of the outcome today, I would encourage the Courthouse Preservation Partnership Group to continue on their mission to make downtown Joliet and Will County as a whole a vibrant city filled with economic development and all the things that we want to see from a healthy community. So thank you very much. That's my comment.
County Board Member Diaz.
Thank you very much. First off, I'd like to apologize if anyone feels that we were careless, that we are blaming you for being careless for your previous vote. That is not at least how I feel at all. I just wanted to have this meeting because I also signed because I think it's imperative that we have this discussion because there's some new things that came about since the old board voted on this. The tax credits, which would greatly help our citizens save money, that's important. We would, the 55 cents per dollar that could be used towards savings on rent in the long term, if we turn that into office space that we're currently paying over $1 million for. If this building took 10 years to pay off at $1 million, that would, in 10 years, it would be paid off. I think we need to do that. That's, that's why I wanted to call this meeting, is to have that discussion, to find out what those numbers are, and find out how long, and get the information to everybody, to myself and to my fellow board members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. County Board Member Williams.
Yes, I agree with County Board Member Diaz. There was no disrespect intended. I came to this board new, and originally I voted for the demolition because I trusted the board members that were here presently. Not that I don't trust them now, but as time went on, I found that there were, there was a possibility that we had not done our due diligence. And I think that, I think that anytime there's as much question as there was about this courthouse, and still is, that we do need to do our due diligence and make sure that we don't just rush and tear down a building that possibly we don't need to tear down. And on a more practical level, if we can get most of it, or even a little bit of it paid for by somebody else, then I don't see why we wouldn't do that because either way, we're going to have to rebuild, a new building is going to have to be built, and we're going to spend some money anyway. So if we can save money, why wouldn't we? But I think that I personally don't think the courthouse is ugly. I'm just probably I'm probably one of a few, but the, the truth of the matter is, does it have to be pretty for us to have a building? Functionality is what we're looking for, not the fact that it can be pretty or ugly. So the fact of the matter is, we are elected to take care of, to help to make this county a better county if we can, and also to represent our, our constituents as best as possible. And I, for one, like to save money, and I'm pretty sure the people I represent do, too. So if we can do that, I think that's what we should do.
Thank you. County Board Member Coleman.
Thank you. I, first, I want to commend the Preservation Committee for sticking to this. They, they've sat here today, they've been at many meetings, and I'm not for or against the demolition. I'm not even necessarily saying if it costs more to renovate versus demolish that I would be against that. Some things cost. What I've seen across our nation and across the world, somebody referenced some other countries, is truly thinking outside of the box. But if legally we can't do anything, then we've been kind of spinning our wheels around this, and I hope we can come to some conclusion today to, to land this plane. But I also believe, and I, I just thought about this sitting here, the prison is not owned by the county, but I'm just using it as an example. It is not a pleasant memory for some people, nor is the courthouse. So with whatever plans we're making, I hope that they were going to include something that gives back to the communities that might not have such a positive view of either one of those buildings. Because what I've seen is that sometimes entities take over spaces, and it's only certain groups that benefit from it. I've been to a couple of cities, Cincinnati, Atlanta, and somewhere else where they've taken an old courthouse or an old prison, and they've turned it into something magnificent. And if it costs money, but in the long run, it's going to be better for the county, then sometimes you have to pay for things. When people thought outside the box, and I'm going to reference Henry Ford, even though he has some personal views I don't agree with, they probably thought he was crazy. The Wright Brothers building the plane, they probably thought he was crazy. They were, like, so sometimes I get really upset because we're in, we're the city, the county seat, and I look at Naperville, I look at Bolingbrook, and I look at their downtown areas, well, not Bolingbrook downtown, but the promenade, and it's something that people want to go to. I go there, right? I've been to the Rialto, I come down here sometimes, but it doesn't look like what I think it should in downtown Joliet. And if it's an opportunity to create something that's going to impact the next generations and be beneficial to them, then I think it's something we can look at. The vote happened the month I was elected, so I, I wasn't on that vote. Then we had COVID, you know, everything kind of got delayed, things cost more money, houses cost a lot more money than they did 10 years ago. So of course the demolition or the rebuild is going to cost more than when we thought about it five years ago. So, last point. The other issue I had, I think we paid maybe $200,000 to get the bids written for people to then bid on the demolition. So if we're going to partner or hire someone to do a non-bias or take a real look at this, then I'm, I'm concerned about that cost, right? We shouldn't spend a quarter of a million dollars trying to figure out if we can renovate this place. So those are my thoughts and concerns, and thank you for letting me share today.
Thank you. Any other discussion items? County Board, we're going to, County Board Member Van Dine.
Thank you. I tried to hit my button and put me in the queue, but of course, we all know how the system works. Thank you. You know, this, this special meeting has provided an opportunity for the public to speak once again over the last couple of years. I think we've done our job by allowing the public to speak. We also have allowed the county board members to speak on their position of this resolution, the whole courthouse ordeal. I don't think any further discussion is needed today amongst the county board members since we could probably guess what their, what their decision will be today. So for those reasons, I would like to call the question.
There is a call.
I have not spoken.
He did not speak, so he can make a motion. Is there a second for that? I have a second by ballot. Madam Clerk, please call.
Yeah, I don't think.
That is true.
Honestly, I had asked to be recognized long before.
All right. You know what? I, I am going to, Joe, I just, if you, this is such a hot bucket, hot topic, I'm just going to kind of bypass. I'm making, it's just so, people are very passionate about this. I appreciate what you're saying. You did make your comment first. If you were just going to call the question, I would have, I probably would have acknowledged that. But since you did speak before, I know, I appreciate what you're doing. I'm going to let people speak, speak again, don't worry, I'm just going to let people speak at least one time. If you have a, I'm only going to allow people to speak twice, though. This is it. This is it. So if you've spoken twice already, you're going to be done. I know you haven't danced, you're going to come back to you. I'm going to go to you last, Dan. You're going to, you're going to be the finale. All right? So, thanks, sorry. We're going to go to County Board Member Pretzel, and then Parker.
Yeah, my concern about this is, whether you like the building or not, I think we would all agree that in its current form, it's ugly. It's got plywood on it, and it's abandoned. How long are we willing to let that be the case? If we just pass a resolution that forms a committee, you all know how these things go, it's going to, it could be years. So, and I guess that's just part of the process, but is there any way to put some sort of a end date on it or speed it up a little bit so that we can move forward on this thing? I mean, it's amazing to me that we're still where we are with it, but can we put some sort of a timeline on it or end date? That's all I have.
County Board Member, and just so people are clear, you guys are asking these questions. I mean, you have the ability to do the amendments, I don't, so. County Board Member Parker.
So, you know, we have some unanswered questions here, and before we vote, again, non-binding, what exactly does it mean? With the passes, what does that mean?
Yeah, so, well, go on, Mary, would you like to acknowledge? I think that was one of the questions regarding the non-binding portion of this.
But there's others.
Okay, well, yeah, let, let's go one at a time, you can keep asking.
Okay, so I, too, have never seen a non-binding before county boards. So when this came up, I did some research to try to discern exactly what impact this would have. I will say I found nothing in Roberts rules about non-binding resolutions. Certainly, there's nothing in county board rules regarding non-binding resolutions. So I searched the United States Senate, I searched the United Nations. They have non, either non-binding resolutions or, I think they call them in the Senate, sense resolutions. The non-binding resolutions by the United Nations are basically resolutions for which they have no legal authority to carry out. So an example that was given was the United Nations would pass a resolution urging Russia to stop aggressions against Ukraine. Clearly, they have no power, so that's why it's a non-binding resolution. The United States Senate does what they call sense resolutions, which are to try to discern what the temperament or the feeling of the members of the Senate are on any particular topic, and they simply do not forward that resolution to the other House or to the President. So it has no impact. So I will say that because there is nothing in the rules or the Roberts rules for it, I would suggest that you take a vote to suspend the rules if you are going to vote on a non-binding resolution. And I think it needs to be clear what the intent is. I would assume that non-binding would mean that you are just trying to check the temperature of the county board to find out whether there is support for further inquiry or not. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't require any action on the part of the executive branch at all. But I think that should be clear in the discussion that that's the intent.
Thank you. The other is, we had members of the public come out and speak and give their opinions on things we can do, but how legit is that? I mean, can we use these tax credits? Is, is that a real thing? And then also about the trust, I know that was one of the reasons we voted in 2019. We couldn't, it was, it was our building, like, we couldn't sell it, we couldn't do anything more with it. So is that still the case?
The trust is still there. Yeah, I mean, the trust, it is based upon a citizen who dedicated property to the people of Will County. So truly, the property is owned by the people of Will County. The county is trustee of that property. You do not, the county does not own it in fee, per se. So what we have always done is, if there's a decision about that property, we have petitioned the court for approval that it is being used for a public purpose. And then the court makes a determination whether or not, you know, whatever use is that property is, is going to, whatever's going to happen to that property, that the courts, in fact, approve and, and basically ratify that, yes, it is a public purpose.
And then to Frankie's point, I was going to bring up the same thing. If this does pass and direction is given for further research, I mean, how long is that going to take? And, you know, I know it's been four years, people are probably saying, what's another month or two months or six months, but at some point, we have to make a decision and just move forward with something.
So I would have to, I am not familiar with the tax credits. However, that being said, I know of absolutely nothing that allows a county, and I'm going to disagree with Member Trineer. We are not a home rule county, so we can only do those things which the statute specifically allows us to do. Now, if we can find authority for something, then we can do it. I know of nothing in the county's code that allows the county to establish an LLC, which is, I think what I heard today, is, is a desire to establish an LLC to kind of usher this project through. But I am more than happy to look at anything that is sent to me. If there is something there and, and the county board has the authority to do something, I, I will happily bring that forward. So, you know, we can look into it. I think if any of the people in the audience have literature on that, just send it to us, we'll look at it.
Thank you.
County Board Member Trineer.
I would entertain the idea of asking the court if that's how you feel we should move forward.
Well, I can't, I'm, just let me clarify. It is after the county board has made a decision of what to do, then we petition the court and get basically approval to go forward. Courts will not make a theoretical decision. So there actually has to be an issue before them.
Okay. Because I know Rockford is not a home rule city either. Again, it's a municipality, not a county, but there have been other county projects that have been done because that was referenced. I just feel, again, that we maybe haven't done all of our homework and, and our due diligence, because at the time, we had no public group that had been in formation coming to us to ask us to save the building. So we didn't really have an option at that point. Now there's people in the public that are interested. I am happy to make an amendment to remove the non-binding portion, if you all would like that, and put a time limit of this, on this of three months. You know, I mean, if we're going to enter into a contract with somebody that's going to demolish the darn thing, we could certainly have those conversations and get the contract all ready to go. I think we can chew gum and walk at the same time. We have, I think it's six bids, the county executive has indicated. They were doing some double-checking, I don't know if anybody's heard this yet, but double-checking on a few of the bids because they came in so low, it was worrisome, that they might not actually be able to do that work at that price. As for the current look of the building, Board Member Parker was with me when I was on a tour of the forest preserve, and we went to Riverview Farmstead, the old Clow house. It's a limestone building. When you look at that building, you wouldn't know if somebody didn't live in it because they put wood on the windows and they put like a wallpaper over the top of it, so it looks like there's curtains, you can see lamps inside, you can see doors inside. I mean, you look like you're looking at the building, and, and it's in perfectly good shape and being used, but it's boarded up. So, you know, we didn't think that far. I mean, we took this vote, nobody knew COVID was coming, nobody knew there'd be a community group that wanted to save the courthouse. I mean, there were a lot of things, right? And we had a hard time after we got all of the CARES money and the ARPA money and all the changes in leadership and the changes in staff. This has been a really rough four years for this county board in terms of change, and I think that has slowed us down a little bit. But I would make the motion.
So let me just make sure, I, this, okay, first, it was, just so you know, there was eight bids, just to clarify.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
So, I mean, a non-binding and a binding is a, is a big difference here. Can we make the motion to change yet? So now the vote, the folks here, I'm.
I mean, I didn't write it.
Yeah, that's fine. No, no, I'm just going to make sure that we are.
So the topic on your agenda is a non-binding resolution.
Okay, that's fine, leave it. It's okay. I'll put a date certain on it, though, if, if, if the maker of the special meeting would be friendly to that. But I think he wants to speak to what I'm saying, so I will step back and let him have his shot.
Okay, we asked, we asked, we're going to ask the attorney the questions, not County Board Member, these are just, so I have, County, did you want some, County Board Member Freeman? All right.
Good afternoon. First of all, I was elected in 2020, and so this decision was made in 2019. I am curious, how much does it cost per month to keep this building there as is? How much per month does it cost us right now to keep that building as is?
No, 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 the building, did you turn on the electric? Yeah. No, I didn't. I'm perfectly comfortable.
I can get those costs.
He's right here.
As far as the operating cost of the, of the building in its abandoned condition, we're, we're spending roughly $8,500 to $10,000 a month, depending upon which time of the year. And that does not include any cost of repairing the vandalism and/or the general cleanup that is needed on a regular basis, so.
Okay, so $8,000 basically a month plus maintenance on the outside for trash and whatnots. My only big beef is, I was elected in 2020, this was voted on in 2019, and we're still talking about it. So, thank you.
Okay, County Board Member Butler. I think you're closing here, sir.
Okay, so first, I understand that this is an exhausting process, and I commend all of you for standing up so far. We talked about this being subjective, and perhaps it is, but that's why we have a county board representing many different people throughout our county, and through a joint consensus, we will come up with an answer. And then there was talk about a trust, a land trust, and bypassing it. No one is talking about doing that, it's not even on the table. We're talking about creating a temporary LLC for five years so that we can fulfill the requirements to get the tax credits. When the LLC is being, you know, constructed, our lawyers will determine how it will be deconstructed, okay? But we are required to have that LLC for five years to make use of those tax credits, at which time it goes right back to the way it is. So if there's any confusion about that, I just wanted to clarify that. So I know, you know, I'm not saying that the, anyone made a poor choice before, but serendipitously, things have changed. We have an option of getting millions of dollars to aid in the construction costs. So those variables have changed, and now we have new parameters to work within, and it only makes sense to look at that. No one's saying the decision made back when it was made was a bad decision. But why should we keep our eyes closed now? In Rockford, well, as far as I know, there's only one home rule county in the state, and that's Cook County, Chicago, right? Cook County. So all the other counties are pretty similar. Rockford is just like us, we're not a home rule, they're not a home rule. They've done government projects like this and taken use of these tax credits. And since then, they've invited, or that has invited hundreds of millions of dollars of private money coming in. taking advantage of those same tax credits. And they are trying to flip Rockford to make it, you know, a thriving city. And they, I, I heard, I believe I heard this correctly, there was like 400 to 500 million dollars of work coming down the pipeline. So it, it, that was just a kickoff point, their first building. So I would like to make a new motion or amend that motion. Basically, insert and replace it. Sorry. Okay. So I would like to move to commit this non-binding resolution to an ad hoc committee to carry out the actions outlined within this resolution. And this committee should meet twice a week and should come to a resolution within three months.
Point of order, I think you can change the resolution that's in the agenda like that. Is that correct, Mary? And this is a special meeting that you have nothing to go by. So I wouldn't want to have anything changed that's on the agenda.
The intent, the intent of the motion. Yeah, I believe that the, the, the intent of the motion meets the, the purpose of the meeting. And it helps to alleviate some of the concerns about how this will get done and how long it will take. And by doing this, we can get it done in a timely fashion and we can appease both sides of this issue. Because ultimately, this ad hoc committee is going to come up with the findings. They're going to submit it to the executive committee. And then the executive committee will make a decision from there.
So, so you're making a motion to remand it to an ad hoc committee, which will be created pursuant to the county board rules? Is that it?
Yes, and I would, yes.
All right.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, he's not changing, no, he's, he's talking about remanding it. But, I mean, the question is, we don't really have an ad hoc committee. So you've, you've kind of left out there in the ether as to where it's going. I mean, I think if you want to make a motion to remand it to a committee, remand it to a committee. And then if that committee wants to create an ad hoc in the future, they can do that. But at this point, you don't have the, there's no place for you to send it to. So an ad hoc committee would have to be created.
In the request for an ad hoc committee, normally you give the instructions for forming that committee.
You do.
But because we have bylaws, we have to adhere to our bylaws, which means that the chair would create and name the members of that committee.
She, she, she would. Yes, she would. She would.
And I would trust that she's been fair on other committees that she would do the same there.
So is the question is, can he make a motion to create an ad hoc committee? What are we asking? I just, what he's trying to find.
He can do, yeah, I mean, they can create an ad hoc committee. They can, they can vote to create an ad hoc committee to deal with this.
But can they do it without, if they're following their, if they're following their rules, they still have to follow their.
They do have to follow their rules. Alls they would be doing is giving direction to the county board chair to create an ad hoc committee. That's what they're talking about.
All right, so you are making a motion for the county board chair to, asking the county board chair to create an ad hoc committee? That is your motion?
My motion was to ask the body to approve an ad hoc committee.
If you're following your rules, only the county board chair can create a committee that could create the ad hoc committee. So you can't, it's in your rules already that the county board chair creates the ad hoc committees.
With, with the concurrence of the executive committee. So I was going to suggest that you remand it back to the executive committee. No, I'm, I'm suggesting that he remand it back to executive committee. Yeah. It's legal to remand it back to executive committee. Yes. To remand it.
Yeah, hold on. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Did you hear me?
No.
I would, I would like to remand it back to the executive committee.
So you make a motion to remand it to the executive committee?
Remand it back to the executive committee.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Okay, we have a motion to remand, I'm not really sure what it is, but what, what, what are we going back to? I mean. Yeah, I don't know if you. Well, I think you're going to frustrate your board members. I know, yeah. Yeah. I'll give you a three-minute recess. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, you're going to. Here's the question I have. I think they got you on three minutes. You got it, you got it. Going to go back to Mr. Butler here, who you're going to clarify your, what you're asking here.
Okay. I want to make a motion to have this assigned back to the executive committee.
We would like to have this topic assigned to the executive committee.
To the executive committee, yes.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the role. This is to, we are making a motion to bring this back to executive. To send to, to send to, to send to. Ballage.
No.
Trainier. Dean Schlotman. No, sorry, she's not here. Okay. Van Dine.
No.
Pretzel. Butler.
Yes.
Newquist. Richmond.
Yes.
Parker. Williams. Diaz. Winfrey. Coleman.
Yes.
Logan.
Yes.
Freeman. Revis. Revis.
No, no.
Ortiz. Mueller. Costa. O'Gala.
No.
Nine, ten, nine, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, no's.
We started off with.
Ten, nine. The four, we hit nine fifty. Julie was not, yeah, twenty-one. So is it from start to here? I don't know. Was it two started? It's Dean Schlotman, last. They're trying, I think there's that.
Okay, so with ten members in the affirmative, the amendment, no, what is it? The resolution goes to the executive committee. All right. Is there anything else? Do I have to go back to anything? There's nothing listed, other new business? Is there any public comment here relevant to matters under the jurisdiction of the county? Anyone here who has anything to say? Okay. We're, we're going to skip comments by the board members and leadership. I think we've done that. So with this, can I get a motion to, to adjourn Revitz second by Mueller? All in favor? Any opposed? So, okay, so.